I'd like to call to order the May 22, 2018 Board of Supervisors and proceed with clerk's items.
Okay Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 25 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Okay, would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call your first item.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 49, you are adopting an ordinance for item number 12, amending Sacramento County Code, Chapter 6.28, Title 6, relating to well-inactivation permit term changed from two years to five years. You waived reading on this on May 8. Also, for item 41, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, adopting an ordinance amending the Sacramento County Water Agency Code relating to Zone 50 water development fees to read as follows. Sacramento County Water Agency Appendix Number 1, Title 4, Schedule A, Water Development Fees. And you also, I'm not sure if this was being introduced or because the notes aren't correct here.
What item?
It's being adopted.
It's being adopted.
Okay, so you waived reading on this also. Thank you. And that concludes my clerk notes.
Okay, Board members, any comments on the agenda?
I just want to make a quick comment regarding agenda item, was it 58? The Antelope P. bid. And I wanted to especially thank the businesses who helped us get there. WinCo, Jeremy with WinCo, Steve with Les Schwab, Percy with McDonald's. There was a lot of hard work over a year that got us this far and hopefully we'll get to the finish line. And I just wanted to especially thank and acknowledge them. Thank you.
Yeah.
Could you repeat the item number on that, Ms. Frost?
Oh, I said 58 and, oh, it's item 28. I have sorts.
Okay, 28.
28. I said 58.
Thank you. I was pretty sure it wasn't 58, but.
Yeah.
Mr. Natoli, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, item 5, if you could call that, please.
Item 5, Approve City of Folsom and County of Sacramento Annexation Tax Exchange Agreement Regarding City of Folsom Corporation Yard Annexation and Memorandum of Understanding Related to Associated Transportation Improvements.
Yes, thank you. In the staff report, and I understand this is slated to be before LAFCO early next month, if I'm not mistaken, but I want to ask about, on page 4 of the staff report, there's discussion about the actual alignment of the intersection and access and concern about traffic flow. And apparently the county has offered comments, but it's not clear to me that, you know, how that's going to be resolved, because it just, it concludes in that paragraph, top of the page, that says that "We request that the city consider this alternative layout as traffic and transportation-related planning for the Folsom Corporation Yard." This is still, you know, in the unincorporated area. It will be surrounded by unincorporated area property. And I guess I'm curious as to how that's going to either get resolved and what latitude staff has, and certainly look at Mike Penrose, but others, to be sure that that gets resolved accordingly. And again, it sounds to me, if it was serious enough to obviously derise the staff report that's before us, I want to be sure you have, you know, the direction and certainly support you need to move forward on this particular point, so.
Supervisor, this thing goes dark on me, sorry.
Is it on now? There it is. Supervisor Natoli, in response to your question, we did provide comments on that specific issue, the alignment of the intersection, have met with the City of Folsom, and come to agreement on a MOU essentially that they will commit to providing for future flexibility of the geometrics of that intersection. And so, we believe that that will fully meet the long-term needs in this location. Since they're dedicating it to us, that item isn't really attached to this. It's their commitment to do that going forward with the mapping, so.
Okay, so is that sufficiently?
We believe it is.
Strong enough to?
Yep.
Okay, again, that was, and maybe that's been a recent, you know, outcome here, because that wasn't covered, I didn't see that.
It was, and that level of detail didn't need to be in the tax sharing agreement, but it is available to the LAFCO process.
And we will memorialize that internally.
Okay, well, I recognize the tax sharing agreement stands alone, but this can't move forward without a tax sharing agreement, so any ability to negotiate terms that are important to us certainly can hinge on, you know, what happens with this particular piece of it. There are a number of pieces that have to fall into place, obviously, and protection for, you know, growth inducement. And I guess the other, I want to, how are we guarding against that? This parcel would come into the city, assuming LAFCO were to take that action. Are there any other aspects related to the perimeter of the property itself, because it will abut agriculturally zoned lands that are Ag 80, if I'm not mistaken? And so, that's a level of detail we don't need to decide here this morning, but I want to be clear, because this disagreement, obviously, is critical in the process. It can't move forward without that, and I'm not looking to hold it up. On the other hand, I want to be sure that issues that we might have from either from a transportation and/or a planning standpoint, or interface with agricultural properties, are done in such a way that they meet, you know, concerns that either staff and/or this board might have. And so, I guess I would just ask Mike and Nav about that.
Yes, so all the transportation-related elements tying to future Scott Road and alignments with the Grantline Road, and all those elements have been sorted out, and so we don't have any concerns about that. From a growth-inducing perspective, there frankly has not been some specific review of that as it relates to the interface. There is a road that would go around, so there potentially will be some access to the south of this property that would be available to the Ag 80, but we don't, I don't see any starting point that would be affecting a growth-inducing component related to the corp yard.
Okay, so.
Our understanding from Folsom is that this will be a corporation yard, and that's the very limited use that they're proposing. We did have some conversation back and forth about, is there any other intention? Is there new SOI? Is there anything else coming? And what was represented back to the county staff was that that's not the case. This is strictly to have a corp yard at that spot.
Just let me ask one question, maybe one more time, though, and just restate it. So, what about the site development itself? They may not have progressed to that point yet. This is obviously moving it to attempt to annex to the city, and then they would put a corporation yard, but the interface between grazing lands, agricultural properties, and basically industrial corporation yard use that will have a lot of activity, the perimeter treatment, as it abuts properties that will remain in agricultural designation, particularly on the east and southern portions, well, even to the west, the road will have some separation there as it enters. I think it's an important point to those treatments. Maybe it's going to be a block wall, maybe it's going to be a cyclone fence, I don't know. I mean, and again, you know, there are different ways to treat that, but I just think it's important to recognize that whether those lands are grazed or not, there's still an agricultural designation, and our general plan is very clear about that, so.
We will.
I just want to be sure you have that, you know, ability to, as we're talking through this with our folks in Folsom.
Yeah, we've had those conversations.
Okay, all right, very good. Thanks. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. I have a question on item 29. Clerk, please read that item.
Item 29, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Office of Planning and Environmental Review to Execute a Mitigation Fee Agreement Between the County of Sacramento and Southgate Recreation and Park District.
So, I guess this question is aimed at our planning director, LeAnn Moffett. This is a bit unusual. We're being asked to bless a fee agreement in advance of the South County Habitat Conservation Plan being actually in place, adopted by this board. I would like to understand what happens, what's the contingency? Should there be a delay in the adoption of the plan? If the plan does not get adopted, what is that, how will that impact what we're being asked to do today?
Certainly. We are moving forward to do some pre-implementation of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, but we also have in planning in the past some experience with doing mitigation, such as Swenson's Hawk mitigation. In the past, we also used to do some Vernal Pool mitigation. So, if the South Sac HCP were to be delayed or take some time period, we would still have an obligation to mitigate, but we do have experience in doing that. So, we would just move forward, as we do with expending Swenson's Hawk funds or other funds, and find a site to mitigate.
So, it would just, it would take place independent of the activities of the conservation plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I just wanted to express my thanks on item 35 to our DOT staff. I know that this is just a contract award, but again, it is advancing what I'm sure this, my colleagues are probably tired of me hearing about, which is all the quality-of-life effort that is taking place in the South Oak Park community. And this is yet another reminder that we are staying on top of the infrastructure needs in that neighborhood. And then lastly, I want the record to show, please, that I am voting no on item 30.
Don, did you, I saw your name flash up here, but it's gone now.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just gonna, back to item 29, if I could, I just, I wanted to be clear, I'm sorry, LeAnn returned her seat, but thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask LeAnn, if I could, real quickly. So, I heard you, in the event there was a delay, but in the event that, you know, because there's a policy matter before this board relative to the HCP, so you would find mitigation lands somewhere, it just wouldn't be tied to the HCP?
Yes.
In the event that didn't happen?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear, I heard what you kind of alluded to there.
Right.
Obviously, you're taking a very positive attitude to the HCP, but I just want to be clear about the policy choice that we have to Mr. Serna's previous point.
Here's what I heard, it's not going to upset the project schedule.
No.
Yeah, not upset the project either, so.
We will mitigate one way or another.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
I would like to make a comment on item 25, and that is the Fulton Avenue P. bid. That's a renewal, and note that it first began in 1998, and we're just so happy and proud of all the work they've done, and that they, it's reflected in the fact that they continue to be able to renew this P. bid, and it's, we've been able to use the success of Fulton Avenue, they're called the gold standard for P. bids in the county, and I continue to have areas come to me and say, how do we, how do we get to be like Fulton Avenue? And it's nice to have a good story, to be able to tell people about it, and I'm just very happy to see that they got enough petitions to renew it again this year. So, I see several members of the management team in the office there, on the board there, including Director Epler. So, congratulations to you, and thank you for all your years of hard work. And I would also like the record to reflect that I'm recusing on items 2, 3, and 31 due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay?
Yeah.
Then we would need a motion.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 2, 3, and 31, and Supervisor Serna voted no on item 30. Item 50 is the presentation recognizing Sharon V. Skinner upon the occasion of her retirement and for 30 years of county service.
Thor Ludi is here to make the presentation.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Thor Ludi, Chief of the County's Construction Management and Inspection Division. And it's my pleasure that on behalf of the board, I present to Sharon Skinner a resolution upon the occasion of her retirement after 30 years of service with the County of Sacramento. So, her actual retirement date is June 2, so we congratulate her. So, I have a resolution, then I have a few comments after I give the resolution. Whereas Sharon Skinner, a 30-year county employee, began on April 12, 1988, as a typist clerk in the Department of Environmental Review and Assessment. And whereas Sharon Skinner was promoted to Steno Clerk III Confidential in the County Executive's Office on April 23, 1989, and on January 14 transferred to the Public Works Department. Now, we've gone from Public Works Department to Municipal Services, now we're back to Public Works Department, so it all's coming around together again. Whereas on March 8, 1992, Sharon's position was classified, classification was re-titled to Secretary III Confidential, and on July 9, 1995, her position was re-titled to Secretary Confidential in the Public Works Department. So, you get this re-titled theme several times throughout this presentation. Whereas on May 26, 1996, Sharon was promoted to Executive Secretary to the Public Works Agency Administrator, and that would have been Warren Harada at the time, where she became a member of the Executive Cabinet. Whereas on November 2, 1998, Sharon was promoted to Secretary to the County Executive, and that would have been Terry Shutton at the time. Whereas on November 21, a year later, Sharon was promoted to Administrative Services Officer and returned to the Public Works Agency, which was re-titled to Municipal Services Agency. And whereas on November 23, 10 years later, Sharon came to work for the Construction Management Inspection Division to work in our Labor Compliance Work Group, where she ensured that the proper prevailing wages were paid on all of the county's public works projects. Whereas Sharon was a member of the following, from 1996 to 1998, Public Works Leadership Team, and from 1996 to 1999, Management Women's Forum. And whereas Sharon co-founded the Forum for People of Color in 1999, and later co-chaired the International Fair in June 2003 to promote and educate county employees and the public at large of the multicultural diversity in Sacramento County. Now therefore, it be resolved, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, we hereby honor Sharon Skinner for her years of service and contributions to the Sacramento community, and wish her happiness and fulfillment in her retirement. And her husband, John, is here, and in her retirement years, she spends, plans to spend quite a bit of time with her husband, John, travel to Arizona to spend time with her son, Terry, spend many hours bike riding, and the thing that she's really looking forward to is getting up in the morning and having breakfast outside on the patio. And traveling and taking cruises with no time commitments to return to work. So, with that, congratulations, Sharon.
Thank you.
And we really wish you happy retirement.
Thank you.
Oh, and one other thing, I have here Sharon's Certificate of Recognition for 30 years of service, signed by our county executive. Where'd he go?
Die.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sharon, did you want to make any comments?
Yes, I have a few words.
Okay.
And then I like to take pictures.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to say that I have enjoyed my 30-year career with Sacramento County. And when I first started in 1988, I learned a lot about environmental regulations and community planning. I remember when I had to work overtime, including weekends, to get the budget summaries done, when I worked in the County Executive's Office for the analysts preparing the budgets to get to their departments on time. My favorite memories are working in the Public Works Department, which later became an agency, as Thor alluded to, and after several reorganizations, was renamed to Municipal Services Agency. Warren Harada and I worked very well together. Don, you remember one?
I remember that very well.
I know you do. Susan, you too, I believe. We always met at agenda deadlines for the board meetings. We had lots of fun at our office and Christmas parties, sometimes they were at my house, at his house. After he retired, we got together to celebrate our birthdays. Warren was a great agency administrator, and sadly, he passed away last year, and I really miss him, because he was a great guy. So, my other experience include working with interim county executive Bob Ryan before we hired, you guys hired Terry Shutton. And I worked in the Communication Media Office, sometimes known as the PIO or Public Information Office. I'm currently working, as Thor said, in the Development Code and Services and Construction Management and Inspection. And my supervisor is Harmel Najer. And Harmel is a great supervisor. I would say boss, but he doesn't boss us. He manages the staff well, and he's a great supervisor. We're going to talk to him, I absorb so much information about labor compliance from him, and I want to thank him. So, I do appreciate him, and it's a little hard for me to leave, I can't believe I'm getting emotional. I learned a whole lot, and knowledge is powerful only if you use it, and I have used my knowledge to reach my goals in the county, so I'm really ready to retire. Overall, the county is a great place to work, and I'm excited about my retirement. I want to thank everyone responsible for hiring me, promoting me, and teaching me in these last 30 years. I want to thank my husband, John, my friends and coworkers for supporting me along my employment journey, some of whom are here today. My family lives out of town in several states, so they are not here, except John, of course. I'm looking forward to this new chapter in my life with my wonderful husband, Johnny, as we enjoy many new adventures. I wish everyone the best in life, and I only have seven more working days. Thank you.
I want to take you pictures. Bring your husband up, if you want, to take the picture, too.
Yeah, okay, good.
Mike, are you taking the picture?
We have a picture.
Ah, okay.
I'm joining in.
Okay.
Don, can I ask you?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'd be happy.
I've known you a while.
Two years.
All right.
She's got a camera, too, but we'll get you.
Okay. How?
Don, I can balance it out. Book it, right, book it.
You're welcome.
That's two years, too.
Thank you.
It's two years, too.
Okay.
I qualify.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Safe travels.
Okay. Can my supervisor say a few words?
I couldn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Oh. Can my supervisor say a few words?
Oh, this, yes, of course.
Good mornings, members of the board. I am Harmel Najer. I work for Thor Ludi, actually, in Construction Management Inspection Division. I was the lucky one to have Sharon on my team. I really enjoyed working with her. Last month, when she gave me this news, I was sadly moved. She has always been the one I could rely on. She did wonderful job, again, on behalf of my whole division, and especially from me, I wish her all the best in her retirement. And she did wonderful job, again, and we hope she has a long and peaceful retirement. And she spends time with her loved ones and does everything she wants to do with her time off. Thank you for 30 years of continuous hard work and your contribution to labor components, as well as the county.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd stay there for a second, Sharon. Sharon, would you, if you'd stay there a second, Mr. Natoli would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to note, and I think that Sharon already did, that certainly I've known her pretty much the entire 30 years that she's worked with the County of Sacramento, and again, don't speak with her frequently, but I would just say that I know her work certainly exemplifies a real dedication to serving the public and certainly in serving in the various roles that she has. I just wanted to comment, though, about the International Fest. I know that it was mentioned, and she and Sharon, and somebody rocking out in the back there, so, she had a lot of cohorts and colleagues that worked with her on that, but I think it really did help to build relationships and understanding amongst certainly county employees, but to the broader community, and was a chance to celebrate in a very positive way, the diversity of our workforce, the diversity of the folks that we serve, and it was something that she didn't have to do, but I think did, because she and others felt it was important to, I think, really make known in a broad fashion, the commitment to diversity in the workplace, but also, and to celebrate that diversity amongst, you know, our employees, but our broader community. And I want to just thank you for that work and leadership, Sharon, and certainly to you and Johnny, as been said here previously, to wish you well, and, you know, your work here has been a blessing to the people of Sacramento County and to all those that have known and worked with you, and I've appreciated that, and I just wish you Godspeed in all your travels. And again, the worst day in retirement still beats the best day working, so enjoy your retirement, so.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on so many years, and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Sharon.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Item 51 is the presentation of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2017, to the Department of Finance, County of Sacramento, by the Government Finance Officers Association.
I'd like to call Ben Lamera up.
With personnel, we had, they actually provided us some actuary reports that we use for liability fund, workers' compensation, and also our post-employment benefits. We worked with SCURS in them preparing their actuary report and also an audit of the pension liability. We had financial statements that are completed by the Airport, Water Resources, Waste Management, General Services, Department of Technology, that we coordinated in the timing of when those needed to be completed. That takes a little bit more effort because we receive information that we push out to them and then they finish their financials and push them back over to our office. We also receive a lot of information from Britt Ferguson and his staff and we really appreciate their efforts because there's a lot of schedules and information that we receive from the Office of Budget and Debt Management. So it is a big effort. Again, we ran this like a project. We hit the timeline that we, timelines that we were supposed to hit. We actually had a lot of effort in also reviewing the CAFR and I want to recognize Camilia Radaluska, Radalusku from Airports in her efforts. We also had Susan Purdon from Water Resources and Alan Montre from our office in our Internal Audit Section. So thank you, again, thank you for all the support and, and just the effort that we put into it. Thanks.
So one of the things that I've told Ben, that when I had a job comparable to his, I got it for eight years in a row, so that's the number he's got to beat. That's the danger of having an ex-finance director as the exec.
So since Chair Peters left me the list, I'm going to, just real quickly, just want to acknowledge the staff that were, that worked on the CAFR this year. Joyce Renison, Assistant Auditor Controller, Marcus Spezzi, Chief of Financial Accounting Reporting Control, Tredus Campbell, Herman Williams, who is now actually not in our department, he moved on to Water Resources, but he actually ran the project last year and, and will be providing us support next year. Paula Burris, Lincoln Bogard, Puna Azla, Ross McCarthy, Nu Her, and June Nguyen. And so thank you and thank you for all your efforts.
Why don't you come over here in the well and they'll take a picture.
Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
Yeah, thank you all. How many years in a row is that now? Is 20-plus?
Twenty.
Twenty? How many, Ben?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. So you already beat Mr. Gill's record by 20 years, so that's all right. That's all right.
The next item, please.
Item 52, Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming the Month of May 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Supervisor Kennedy is going to take the lead here.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is something that we do every year and it's just as important every year. I don't normally read a lot of the wheres, but I'm going to read a few because I think it's important that we remind ourselves of why it is every budget year. We have, and I will say that the board has, in the four years I've been here, made mental health a priority and unanimously, as a board, we have done that. Whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and three-quarters by 24, whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management and mental, of mental illness and recovery. Whereas every person in community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. So that's why this gentleman is here with me. This is David Bain with the National Alliance Mental Illness, who is a one-man band for all of these things throughout the year, not just one month out of the year. So I'm proud to present this to NAMI and to David for the work that you and they do. I also want to thank frankly our staff. We have tireless, overworked staff in our behavioral health under the leadership of Uma Zikovsky and so many others, who really are champions for this effort and making people's lives better on a daily basis, not just one month out of the year. So with that, I'd like to present this with David and give an opportunity to make some comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, the board. I appreciate your efforts throughout the year, not just in May. The county is the single most entity for providing mental health services through Uma and her Division of Behavioral Health Services, so we appreciate that. One in five Americans are subject, possibly impacted by mental health throughout the year, so bringing that to Sacramento County, that's 280,000 people. So that's a lot of people and I would ask that you guys give Uma even more work through funding to provide more programming because there's a variety of mental illnesses and a variety of intensities of mental illnesses, so it takes a variety of programming. Not only the individuals who are living with mental illness, but the family members who need some care and support as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
I'd like to actually take a photo if I could and Uma, I'm glad I mentioned you because I didn't see you there. I would have been in trouble if I hadn't. Can you come down for a photo? Great, thank you. Right here.
You do here?
Yes.
Item 53 is the Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming July 15 through the 21st, 2018 as the 45th and final Epi's Great Race Week in Sacramento County.
We call up George Johnson and Lisa Mangles.
Hello. Here we are again. Well, we have another resolution for Epi's Great Race founded by your dad.
Yeah.
In 1974 and is known as the world's oldest triathlon, the Great Race and the No Swim Triathlon. The Epi's Great Race has generously donated proceeds from the race to Sacramento County's Therapeutic Recreation Services, whose participants have benefited from this contribution since 1986. The Great Race has many positive impacts on Sacramento County, including promoting health and wellness, volunteerism, and encouraging the enjoyment and use of the American River Parkway. They draw about 2,000 athletes and hundreds of volunteers and thousands of spectators to our region from all over the United States. The Great Race includes a traditional triathlon as well as a kids' duathlon along the American River and with the 45th race being the event's final year, it will be forever cherished as a unique signature in Sacramento County. So the Board of Supervisors of the County of Sacramento want to express a gratitude to all those associated with Epi's Great Race and especially to the event sponsors and members of the Epi-Johnson family. So here we go. Last one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where'd my wife go?
I don't know.
Where's Mom?
Mom, he wants a picture now.
Tina, you take the picture.
Oh, okay, your daughter's doing it.
All right.
She didn't know this was her turn.
Yeah, she really did.
Oh. Thanks, Avina.
Thank you.
Okay, now, do you have some comments you want to make?
Yeah, it's all right. I think Jeff's.
Jeff is up next.
I'm up next. Appreciate it.
I think part of this will fit. Flo, when you get a chance, can I see if some of that will fit on the overhead?
Sure.
So as Chair Peters just acknowledged that this next year coming into July is going to be the 45th and final Epi's Great Race and as part of that acknowledgement and celebration, we wanted, on behalf of the board and on behalf of the county, to provide just a couple of items of our appreciation to the Johnson family. The first of these are framed here in the front and also in the back. We have the 70, or the Second Annual Epi's Great Race poster that we had recreated and framed on behalf of the county. And we chose this one intentionally because it was the second annual, which kicked off then many more races to come. And I wanted just to read a couple of excerpts from the history of both the first and the second, because I think it's interesting. If you notice, in the bottom left-hand corner, the rules are about a paragraph long. Now, if you were to read the rules of Epi's Grace, Great Race, there are several pages of different divisions and rules. So it really started by Mr. Johnson, I think, coming up with a wild idea of how he potentially celebrates and markets his restaurants. And from the first year, numerous challenges had to be overcome. This early attempt at mixing three athletic activities, two examples of those early interesting experiences, where only four days before the event, Epi was told that he was required to have a permit. Now, I can only imagine Mr. Johnson, four days before, finding out that he didn't have a permit and potentially being told that he couldn't run the race and the experience that that would have been for the park staff would have been interesting. He was also informed that if any cyclist did not stop during the race, they would receive a citation and potentially be arrested. I can also only imagine what that would have been like for somebody to deliver that message to Epi. And so after the first successful race of about 32 teams, they committed to the second annual. And as a parks director, I was reading through these statements, which was that the mass start of the bike riders started and headed towards the Sunrise Canal. There was only one light bulb, a 45-watt light bulb, in the tunnel as they crossed over and under Highway 50 to the American River Bike Trail. Cyclists were paced by a lead vehicle, then they were turned loose to sprint through the course. A few riders wore helmets and crashes were common in the crowded turns. So those were the first two years of Epi's Great Race that has then just expounded into what we know and experience coming into the 45 years of our history, which is pretty special. I am thankful that everybody is required to wear helmets. I am thankful that we have few crashes, not multiple crashes, throughout the race.
And no one gets arrested?
And nobody got arrested, that I'm aware of, yes, which is also very important.
Jeff, I just note too that on the poster you have there that the entry fees in that second race went to the Aquarian Effort, the effort, you know, they went to the effort and I think now well space has evolved over time, but, so it wasn't therapeutic recreation services initially, but obviously over time, it's, you know, they've contributed significantly to that, so.
Yes. And, I think I just said that right there. And to acknowledge that very point, in the 80s, Therapeutic Recreation Services was selected and this is one of the examples from the 19, this is the 86 race where Therapeutic Recreation Services was the chosen charity. And obviously a special place for the county to be involved and over the years, so from the 1980s into the 2000s, at the 2000, let me grab my notes here, 2006 mark, we were over $800,000 that was contributed to our therapeutic recreation services. And then in 2011 and 2012, we hit the million-dollar mark, which I had the pleasure of just arriving here at the county to celebrate that mark, which is pretty amazing that over the years of the history, we have not only been the recipient of many of the proceeds, but has accumulated to such an amazing extent of being over a million dollars. So on behalf of the department, I want to thank the Johnson family. I know that Epi worked very hard, but it was the entire family and we're into the third generation of that, that are always there out the race with the kids. I've seen them over the last six years work in various booths and being a part of not only the Friday Team Day, but also the celebration on Saturday. So thank you to the entire family. And as part of that, we have a couple of our athletes from the Therapeutic Recreation Services program that want to come down and also express their gratitude to the Johnson family. As you know, the Wellness Foundation supports our TRS program. They purchase uniforms that many of the athletes are wearing. We have new floor hockey equipment this year, as well as a number of scholarships throughout our program. So the athletes are coming down to do that quick and Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I wanted to say, members of the board are very happy that there are no costumes for the board members involved this year. Several people here wore wigs and big shoes for one particular event. And then I wanted to tell you in case you, George, wherever he went, for a, I knew your dad from various things and for about a year, we lived in the same condominium neighborhood. And as it turned out, we both owned Welsh terriers. And so, yeah.
You met Zoe then?
Yeah, I met, oh, I knew Zoe well, yeah. And whenever I would walk my dog, almost every day, someone'd say, "Oh, are you Epi's dog walker?" Well, no, no, we just have dogs that look alike. Then he took me in his house where Zoe reigned supreme and it was definitely a dog's paradise, is what I'll say. But from then on, we walked our dogs together and then people would double take. So that was one of my favorite memories of your dad, so. You're next.
Okay. Stand up right here.
Hi, board. My name is Hermanda Seals and I'm with the Sacramento County Chargers.
Good morning, board. I am Maurice Hollins. I'm with the Sacramento Chargers.
And from the first year, numerous challenges had to be overcome. This early attempt at mixing three athletic activities, two examples of those early interesting experiences, where only four days before the event, Epi was told that he was required to have a permit. Now, I can only imagine Mr. Johnson, four days before, finding out that he didn't have a permit and potentially being told that he couldn't run the race, and the experience that that would have been for the park staff would have been interesting. He was also informed that if any cyclist did not stop during the race, they would receive a citation and potentially be arrested. I can also only imagine what that would have been like for somebody to deliver that message to Epi. And so, after the first successful race of about 32 teams, they committed to the Second Annual. And as a parks director, I was reading through these statements, which was that the mass start of the bike riders started and headed towards the Sunrise Canal. There was only one light bulb, a 45-watt light bulb, in the tunnel as they crossed over and under Highway 50 to the American River Bike Trail. Cyclists were paced by a lead vehicle, then they were turned loose to sprint through the course. A few riders wore helmets, and crashes were common in the crowded turns. So, those were the first two years of Epi's Great Race that has then just expounded into what we know and experience coming into the 45 years of our history, which is pretty special. I am thankful that everybody is required to wear helmets, I am thankful that we have few crashes, not multiple crashes, throughout the race.
And no one gets arrested?
And nobody got arrested, that I'm aware of, yes, which is also very important.
Jeff, I just note, too, that on the poster you have there, that the entry fees, that second race went to the Aquarian Effort, the effort, you know, they went to the effort, and I think now well space has evolved over time, but, so it wasn't Therapeutic Recreation Services initially, but obviously over time, it's, you know, they've contributed significantly to that, so.
Yes. And, I gotta just set that right there.
And to acknowledge that very point, in the 80s, Therapeutic Recreation Services was selected, and this is one of the examples from the 19, this is the 86 race, where Therapeutic Recreation Services was the chosen charity, and obviously a special place for the county to be involved. And over the years, so from the 1980s into the 2000s, at the 2000, let me grab my notes here, 2006 mark, we were over $800,000 that was contributed to our Therapeutic Recreation Services, and then in 2011 and 2012, we hit the million-dollar mark, which I had the pleasure of just arriving here at the county to celebrate that mark, which is pretty amazing, that over the years of the history, we have not only been the recipient of many of the proceeds, but has accumulated to such an amazing extent of being over $1 million. So, on behalf of the department, I want to thank the Johnson family. I know that Epi worked very hard, but it was the entire family, and we're into the third generation of that, that are always there out the race with the kids. I've seen them over the last six years, working in various booths and being a part of not only the Friday Team Day, but also the celebration on Saturday, so thank you to the entire family. And as part of that, we have a couple of our athletes from the Therapeutic Recreation Services program that want to come down and also express their gratitude to the Johnson family. As you know, the Wellness Foundation supports our TRS program, they purchase uniforms that many of the athletes are wearing. We have new floor hockey equipment this year, as well as a number of scholarships throughout our program, so the athletes are coming down to do that quick, and Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I wanted to say, members of the board are very happy that there are no costumes for the board members involved this year. Several people here wore wigs and big shoes for one particular event, and then I wanted to tell you, in case you, George, wherever he went, it's for a, I knew your dad from various things, and for about a year, we lived in the same condominium neighborhood, and as it turned out, we both owned Welsh terriers, and so, yeah.
You met Zoe, then?
Yeah, I met, oh, I knew Zoe well, yeah. And whenever I would walk my dog, almost every day, someone would say, "Oh, are you Epi's dog walker?" Well, no, no, we just have dogs that look alike, and then he took me in his house where Zoe reigned supreme, and, yeah, it was definitely a dog's paradise, is what I'll say, but from then on, we walked our dogs together, and people would double-take, so that was one of my favorite memories of your dad, so.
You're next. Stand up right here. Introduce yourself.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, Board, my name is Hermanda Seals, and I'm with the Sacramento County Chargers.
Good morning, Board, I am Maurice Hollins, I'm with the Sacramento Chargers.
Right, awesome. And you could just present that to George right behind you.
And we would like to present this to you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And we also would like to make you our honorary coach for Sacramento.
All right.
So, Chargers.
That's awesome, thank you very much.
Says from our teams to yours.
There he goes. Got to get it right, right? Yeah. There you go. Says coach, too. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Get a picture with the Chargers there.
There you go. Thank you.
And just before I turn it over to George, if I could have all of our TRS athletes that are here today representing our TRS teams, go ahead and stand up. We want to say congratulations and great job for all the work that you do representing the county, and you guys could come on down, and then George is going to do the check presentation.
You got a lot of hardware on, a lot of medals. A lot of winners here, that's cool. All right, we're going to do, let's do this, let's present a little bit more money, because that's what we love, that's what we love to do each year, let Lisa sign the check.
I got to sign, yeah.
As you know, this last year for Epi's Great Race was a, was our lowest in recent history in attendance. So, we peaked about, three years before my dad passed, our dad passed, I think that would have been about Epi's Great Race '37, we hit 2,092 people in our race, and from then on, we just saw this decline, we got to, just barely got over 1,000 people by race day. And so, that was, you know, that was a big contributing factor, is to us deciding that, you know, this type of event, which Dad always said needed 15, 1600 people to justify the year-round work that all of our committees do, and that we do, and everything, so anyways, we also thought it fitting, Dad was 45 years old when he started the race, 45th, it worked. So, anyways, the good news is that we've got more support for TRS. Even better news is, even though the event will be ending, we'll have next year's, this year's proceeds, of course, but our foundation will continue to support TRS.
Wow.
She signed it, so anyways, we're going to present, you present TRS again with $20,000 for this last year, and we'll have many more years to support them, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll take a picture outside, too. Bring it all outside.
So, the Board of Supervisors is going to recess right now for five or 10 minutes, go out this door and out on the plaza, and there's a celebratory arch, and we'll get a picture taken with the.
The finish line.
It's the finish line, yeah. So, I don't have my gavel to the, so, we're recessing.